Want to start us off with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions?
No, sir.
None.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 2 public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to start out with a presentation. I'm real glad to see this one going. This will be a presentation to Edward Calvin Ott, State of Maryland 4-H Alumni of the Year Citation. Doctor, would you like to come up and make a few statements?
We are also really excited about this citation, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here today. The Maryland 4-H Alumni Award is designed to honor 4-H members who have continued their love and support of 4-H into their adult lives. The main criteria for this award is that the winner is utilizing their exemplary skills learned as a 4-H member to continue to enhance the 4-H program. We are proud to announce that of the nearly 10,000 4-H volunteers throughout the state of Maryland, one of our own, Eddie Ott, was selected as the winner of this prestigious award. Eddie Ott has been a volunteer for Allegheny County 4-H for nearly 30 years. His 4-H history goes way back to 1957 when he started 4-H here, and he often reminisces what it was like showing livestock at our fairgrounds and all of the many positive changes he has seen in the fair and the 4-H program. He also has fond memories of attending 4-H camp in Western Maryland. Back in 1962, he was inducted into the 4-H All-Stars, which really is an honor as well. But currently, he's the leader of the Mountain and Valley Livestock Club with over 40 youth, which is one of the largest clubs, and 20 volunteers. He works diligently to make certain that the members have an educational program at every meeting, as well as encouraging youth to enjoy lots of recreational opportunities and camaraderie. And he's been really instrumental in increasing the club numbers, which we're really proud of, because that's something that with all of the opportunities that youth have here in Allegheny County, you know, it's difficult. 4-H, we want it to continue to grow, and Eddie has been really instrumental in that. So we want to thank him for that. So in closing, we're so grateful of all of your contributions, Eddie, and the dedication and support to our 4-H program, and we're so proud that you were selected by the State of Maryland to receive this Alumni of the Year Award. So congratulations.
Ed, would you please come forth, please? Yes, we have. Sir, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Allegheny County, Maryland official citation. Edward Calvin Ott, State of Maryland 4-H, 2014 Alumni of the Year. Whereas Allegheny County Government, Cumberland, Maryland wishes to publicly recognize Edward Calvin Ott, a resident of Clearville, Pennsylvania. And whereas Edward Calvin Ott joined Allegheny County 4-H during his formative years nearly 60 years ago. He showed livestock at the Allegheny County Fair, attended the Western Maryland 4-H camp, and was honored as an Allegheny County 4-H All-Star, as well as the State of West Virginia 4-H All-Star. And whereas Edward Calvin Ott became a volunteer with Allegheny County 4-H 30 years ago, has encouraged multiple generations to pursue agriculture, and year after year continues to be an indispensable person to the Allegheny County 4-H. And whereas Edward Calvin Ott was awarded the State of Maryland's 4-H 2014 Alumni of the Year for his lifelong activities in this commendable organization. Now, therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County, wish to extend our sincere appreciation to Edward Calvin Ott for his significant contributions to our community. And witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the seal of Allegheny County, Maryland to be affixed this 16th day of July in the year 2015, signed by all three county commissioners, William Valentine, Creed Brody, and Jacob Shad. Once again, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Jake remembers 30 years ago when you started.
That's right. It's 30 years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And thank you to the rest of you out there. 4-H is an unbelievable organization that does quite a bit for our county. And now, this is another thing that I'm quite proud to have, a presentation, Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship Update. Mr. Jones, please.
On behalf of our Board of Trustees, Jane Belt, who is with us today, our vice chair, our Foundation Board of Directors, Dr. Audie Klimler, who's with us today, our faculty and staff, and most importantly, our students, I'm here to thank you for your support of this program. Your investment has greatly enhanced the economic opportunities for our citizens and our community by supporting education, job training, and career preparation, as well as supporting families and the core values that reflect our community. We are most grateful for your vision to make this happen. The future of the region's well-being is dependent on having an educated and skilled workforce, and Allegheny College of Maryland is committed to serving as an educational partner to meet that need. We will continue to develop and enhance our academic and career programs and instructional delivery systems to meet the needs of this community. Thank you.
On behalf of the college, again, I'm very happy to be here and pleased to present the year one report for the Opportunity Scholarship Program. Being a good steward of these funds is just critically important to the college and the foundation, and we're delighted to present the fiscal year 2015 report. If you might distribute, that would be wonderful. I know we have a limited amount of time, and we put a lot of information here. I'd like to just give a couple highlights, but certainly be glad to provide more information or detail any of the information that's there. Inside the, on the front cover, you'll see a map of Allegheny County in the word "impact", and I hope and trust that you'll agree with me that when we go through the fast facts and the information, you will see the tremendous impact of this program on this community and on the college. Inside the front cover, you'll notice the fiscal year 2015 fast facts. I'd like to just go through these. These are just the impact of the program during the first year. Recipients of this investment represent every community in our county. All public and private schools in Allegheny County, as well as homeschool and GED students, have been awarded funded through the program. Recipients have included students from nearly every major, every curriculum offered by the college. The average range of recipients started at age 17 and go through age 54 with an average of 24, to show the non-traditional impact of this. The early college jumpstart program assists the K-12 students, providing those that are low-income, free, and reduce lunch to $100 per course to take early college. The Opportunity Merit Scholarship to reward the most highest-achieving students, awarded over 270 scholarships during the fiscal year. The Tuition Subsidy to help those with a documented need, unmet need, supported 170 awards during fiscal year 15. And the Workforce Development component of the program provided nearly 150 awards to provide professional and workforce training. When we put this together on the second page, the award types, we wanted to, again, show the breadth and the depth of the program, and that's why we had four primary components that we had shared with the commissioners and got your blessing on these. The Tuition Subsidy for those that had an unmet need, the merit to reward the highest-achieving students, the Workforce Development to support the area businesses, the local economy, and also the Early College to help support the K-12. In this, kind of the centerfold of the program, again, I'm not going to read this to you, but it has more of the program impact. It shows the number of awards on the green column on the left. It shows the average age, GPA, but it also shows all of the academic programs on the credit side. Nearly every academic program is represented here. On the right side, for the Workforce Development, it shows just some of the training, some of the programs that were supported to benefit our community, focusing on advanced manufacturing, information technology, cybersecurity, and other needs identified by those in our region as well. The high schools are represented there at the bottom. Every public, private high school, GED, and homeschool students, city's represented, and some municipalities that are not incorporated are also receive scholarships, but they're just not incorporated city to show up on their official address. Economic impact, if you turn to the next page, shows the impact of this program in our community. The college enjoys a 15.2% rate of return on the investment of ACM. ACM students increase the tax base of this community by $10.8 million per year. For every dollar of support, $1.30 comes back annually in the form of higher tax receipts and avoided costs, and the annual rate of return is 4.3% as well. We receive thank you letters from hundreds and hundreds of students as well every year, and I have for you hundreds of letters that talk about the specific impact of this program for the commissioners. I'd be honored to give this to you as a gift. I have on the back page summarized some of those comments, and literally there are hundreds, and it's hard to pick out one or two, and I randomly just pulled about a dozen. Some students said, "I take my school in very seriously and promise that every penny will be put to good use." "Your financial support has allowed me one step closer to my goal. It has inspired me to help others by giving back to the community. Your choice will help me become a better partner and provider for my family and a pillar of our community." And toward the bottom, "I consider this investment as to be an investment in the future, in my future, and I appreciate this great opportunity." I think it shows the impact, and when you read these letters, they're not just a short letter. Sometimes they're a handwritten four- to five-page letter, talking about the family, the impact, what they've been through, and how this money is an investment in them. So I'd like to publicly say thank you for your investment in this program, for your vision to make it happen, and for making an impact.
David, would you go to the very last page and read the one in the center, the longest one?
Sure. "I was a homemaker until I got the opportunity to attend Allegheny College of Maryland to pursue my educational goals. Now I will be the first person in my family to attend college, and I hope that my success will inspire my children and extended family to develop and achieve educational goals of their own." And I think you'll see that same sentiment reflected in dozens and dozens and dozens of letters, and I don't want to burden you, although I would be honored to give this to the county commissioners just to show the impact when you see these letters and the impact of your support and investment in our community.
That'd be great, David. And the early college students that are going out to AC, and lots of those students, you know, you don't qualify for aid when you're still in high school.
Right.
And so that definitely makes a difference if they want to get a head start in college.
If they have that need, we fully support their early college classes.
Absolutely, that's wonderful.
And truly, this is a partnership because your campus has supported this county for many years. You know, I first entered what was in Allegheny Community College on Frederick Street in '69. That was the previous century, Jake, you don't remember that one.
1969.
I was going to say, for clarification.
Not 1869 either. But it's always tremendous pleasure to attend your functions out of campus and see how that campus has grown, how it continues to grow, and that campus makes this county much stronger. So I truly think this scholarship program is the key to our economic success in the next couple of years. It'll be good to take another look in six or seven years and see how many people have gone through this and where they are at that point.
In the future years, we look forward to sharing that information with the commissioners as well, just to show the continued impact of this investment.
We appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's another guy I've known for a year or two.
I've been on this Foundation Board for 20 years. When I first started, we had about $1.3 million. Now we're up to about $11 million, thanks to you. The daumen is fantastic. When we sit and listen to students' needs, the needs are always much higher than the money that we have, and the money that you all provide makes a huge difference. And I was talking to my parents this morning, and I thank them because they go to Rocky Gap twice a week. And they're 90 years old, and they still go. Allegheny College works collaboratively to better economic development. Opportunities provide the education, job training, and career preparation services needed by our residents. This college makes an impact like no other entity in our community. The comprehensive scholarship statistics are impressive. The documented economic impact shown by external entities is powerful, but the quotes from these students show that this program is life-changing, just like with the one that we read here today. The front cover of the report says "impact," and I can't think of a better word to show the importance of this program. Again, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on into our action agenda now. Item number three, Code Home Rule Bill 5-15. Mr. Bennett, Money Man.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know, back on June 18, we introduced Code Home Bill 5-15, and it's seeking authorization of $5.7 million worth of water and sewer projects that would be funded both through USDA and MDE. Part of the bond bill process, we have to introduce. We then have a hearing, which we did on July 2. Tonight would simply be your first opportunity to go ahead and take a vote on this bond bill. I will remind you, this does not tie us to the debt just yet. It's simply authorization to pursue these projects. And if you don't mind, I'll name quickly the projects, and I'll leave it up to you. We've got $3.5 million tagged for rights crossing sewage pump station upgrade, $250,000 for Route 36 water, $250,000 for Barrowville water, $500,000 for Sunnyside water, $300,000 for Creek Road water, $200,000 for Pond Circle water, $250,000 for Rollins water, $250,000 for Braddock Run sanitary sewer improvements, and $200,000 for Bedford Road sanitary sewer improvements. So a lot of projects. Some haven't even started yet, but they're in concept mode. Some have already started or gone out to bid, so we're in varying stages, but this would at least authorize us to proceed with borrowing. So I'll leave it to you.
Gentlemen, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to support Code Home Rule Bill 5-15?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Now we'll move to item number four, Resolution 15-16.
This resolution's actually one that is just an amendment to Resolution 15-90 we adopted back on May 7, and it was for a $1.6 million Maryland water quality loan authorization. There's one thing that the attorneys, as they're reviewing it, found, one of the repayment terms was marked as 2017. It actually begins repayment February 1, 2016. So all we have tonight is just a simple revision for you. And if you approve this, we'll actually be closing these loans July 30, so.
Any questions?
No.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And before we go any further, I call attention to our new camera person over here, a blushing, newly-wet. And so let's hear a big round of congratulations for him. Interface always turns that color red when.
And congratulations to Trent also.
Okay, we'll move to item number five, Memorandum of Understanding Management Services Agreement for Tourism.
Good evening, commissioners. County Administrator Everly requested that I come before you tonight and present a two-year contract for a management service agreement for Rivers Edge Business Associates of Old Town, Maryland, to provide tourism services for the county from July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2017, a two-year contract.
And how long has she been providing these services?
I looked back at that, and I believe previously we had contracted with the Chamber of Commerce, and I think that ended in 2009, and then we moved to Rivers Edge. I believe it was 2010.
Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion?
Is it just standard to do a two-year? One-year, two-years?
This is the first time it's been renewed in a while, if my memory serves me correct. Sometimes we've done one year, sometimes it's been two years. It just depends.
Gotcha.
This term is for two years is what we're proposing tonight.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, enough. Item number six, introduction.
Thanks, Matt.
Introduction of Code Home Rule Bill 6-15. Mr. Jake?
That is mine.
That is all yours.
Well, thank you, commissioners. This is something that we've talked about before, and it's been a while coming, and it's going to be a while before we can get it enacted, and hopefully, it'll be in effect by July 1 of 2016. So what this does is it expands the Homestead Property Tax Credit. That's based on your assessment. So right now, your assessment has to go up 7% for you to qualify for the tax credit, which very few people get, even when assessments are increasing rapidly. We're going to lower that to 4%. It's more in line with most of the other counties in the state of Maryland, and it doesn't have too big of an impact to our revenues right now, but the hope is that it will in the future. In the mid-2000s, this is kind of where the county got in some financial trouble, when all your assessments are skyrocketing and you're paying more and more taxes, but we didn't have to increase your rates. Your assessments went up and you had to pay it. Then when the assessments go down, we lost a lot of revenue. So this is a safeguard for future county commissions to kind of keep our revenue more closely aligned, and it also gives tax breaks to folks when their assessments go up. So, thank you.
Sir, I think you ought to have the honor of.
You make the motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're not opposing this, Jake?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, this is the introduction, and we will schedule a public hearing for the 30th and take public comment at that time.
Goodness. Okay, item number seven, Barrowville, Prince Albert, and Sunnyside Water Projects. Mr. Yetter. Sir.
This project, or at least the concept stages of this effort, have been going on for a while. We've had public meetings and also a couple of votes. In order to make sure that we got the opinion of as many people as we possibly could, county staff went door-to-door to try to get, make sure we had a good coverage of what people wanted. Based on that, the Sunnyside area voted that they would like to have county water, with the exception of a small pocket in Upper Sunnyside, which we believe we can lay out the system and just skip that area. They're pretty much all grouped together. The Barrowville Water Company customers voted no, that they do not want county water. The Prince Albert area, which is out past the Sunnyside Water Company Service area, voted yes. And usually USDA requires, if we pass a customer, they have to hook up, but in this case, they said that we could pass the Barrowville Water Company customers since they already had water service. So that was helpful to this project. And the water company said they will not allow any of their customers to connect to the county service when it goes by. So with that, we've brought, the water has been brought down Route 36 and another project. We'd like to get your approval to apply for funding for these two other pieces, the Sunnyside area and the Prince Albert area to provide water service. We believe that we're optimistic about getting funding from USDA. We'll do the project in-house.
Very good. Any questions?
And we're doing Lower Sunnyside and skipping Upper? Is that what it was?
There's only a small piece of Upper Sunnyside that's not interested. We think we can pick up the people who are and just not go to that pocket. Luckily, they seem to be grouped together.
Any other questions?
None, sir.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next party. All right, Cumberland Area Metropolitan Planning Organization requests for proposal. Ms. Sierra.
So this is to advertise an RFP that was requested by the City of Frostburg for the intersection of University Drive, College Avenue, and Bell Street, and it's taking consideration the new public safety building at FSU, and is to provide recommendations to improve the safety and efficiency of that intersection. Get it out on the street next week, and then have it come in and awarded like mid-September, maybe late August. So I'd like your permission to advertise that.
Do we have any questions?
No, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll move to Resolution, or we'll move to the Cumberland Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Request for Proposals.
All right, so this is, you mean the tip amendment?
Or, okay, Resolution 5-15.
Yes, okay, so, excuse me. So this is for the Transportation Improvement Program, and we update it as needed. The MTA asked to add 5310 funding for nonprofit capital assistance. I believe this is for purchasing vehicles for friends aware to enhance mobility in the area for seniors and people with disabilities. And the State Highway Administration asked to revise the Barrowville Road Bridge Project to add funding and to shift some costs from design to construction and purchasing right away in that area. So this tip amendment will make those changes.
Do we have any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
And the concern agenda.
Commissioners, this evening, I have six items on the agenda for you to review and consider. Items 11 and 12, commissioners, are reappointments for positions on the county's Social Services Board and the Animal Control Board. Item 13 is a bid award to Bedford Valley Petroleum for unleaded gas, diesel fuel, heating oil, and kerosene. Item 14 is the county's annual bid award for workers' comp to the Hartford Insurance Company for FY '16. Commissioners, item 15 is a declaration of surplus for eight vehicles which were abandoned as a result of police investigations, and two vehicles which are no longer needed by the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office. And likewise, the final item on the sheet tonight is a request for a declaration of surplus for two vehicles assigned to the county's Department of Emergency Services.
Do we have any questions?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dave, we have a bid opening?
Commissioners, we did earlier this week. It is for the Phase 4 of Braddock Run Sewer Rehab Project, and we hope to be in a position in a couple of weeks to. we hope to be in a position in a couple of weeks to move ahead with the awarding of that contract.
Very good. Mr. Rudd.
Yes, I do have a statement to read. This is from the closed or executive session, which the Commissioners held on July 2, 2015, at 3:30 PM. The Board of County Commissioners had a public session convened on Thursday, July 2, 2015, at 3:00 PM, voted to go into a closed executive session. The meeting time and place and the purpose of the meeting were provided, and a public notice provided in the same manner into the same entities as received notice of all public meetings. Meeting was closed in accordance with the general provisions of Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, or the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305, and the purposes for which the meeting was closed were as follows. One, to consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation, that is under subsection B-8. Consultation with counsel to obtain legal advice, that is under subsection B-7. Those in attendance for the closed session were Commissioner William R. Valentine, Commissioner Creed V. Brody Jr., Commissioner Jacob C. Shade, County Administrator David A. Everly, County Attorney William M. Rudd, and Director of Emergency Services Richard DeVore, as well as Recording Secretary Cindy Young. Discussion was held regarding possible litigation involving three matters. The first related to a public right-of-way, the second related to a public utility rates, and the third related to a zoning matter. After conclusion of the discussion concerning the above matters, the Commissioners voted unanimously to adjourn the closed session, and it was adjourned at 4:10 PM. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioners, Jake, do you have any statements you'd like to make?
None tonight.
Sir, I'll just keep it very brief. If everyone will take notice in the veil next week, they've noticed the bower is closing. We have a new business, that it will be building a new business there, and the reason I bring this up, because about every other day on Facebook, someone posts that they've talked to the Vice President of the Sheet's Corporation, or this corporation, and they are not coming to the veil. Well, if they just pay attention about Monday or Tuesday of next week, the bower will start to disappear, and then by about November something or other, they'll see something else appear. So, I'll lay that one to rest publicly. I can't answer enough stuff through the gossip columns of things called Facebook and stuff, but just to put that one down. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I'd just like to, once again, say thanks to the people from 4H that were here earlier, that it really is a tremendous organization, and when you see what all they do with the students, they've got a fantastic robotics course that the students go through, and it is great training in leadership and everything else for the students to go through 4H. So, I think we're very lucky to have them here in Allegheny County. Now, we'll move into public comments. We've got one speaker signed up, Mr. Von Stein.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Please give your name and address, and you have five minutes to state your business.
Gary Von Stein, currently live in Rawlings, Maryland. I'd like to thank you for your time here tonight. As you're aware, the reason I'm probably here, it's regarding to issues that arose in 2013 regarding members of Crescent Town Fire Department running the demolition derbies. I requested a meeting with Mr. Valentine, which the meeting took place in early 2014. The meeting consisted of Mr. Valentine, Kevin Comeoff, Larry Humberson, Jen Humberson, John Pratt, who were all employed by the county during the week of the fair. Also present for this was the President of the Fire Department, Chris Cage, myself, Nathan Cook, and Gary Von Stein. Mr. Cook and myself were the ones being affected by this current change with the county and the Fire Department regarding the derbies. Mr. Comeoff advised the Fire Department to do what's best if they wanted to continue to get the money from the county. The meeting took place, and at the end of the meeting, all parties at the meeting came to an agreement, including county personnel. Mr. Cook and myself were instructed that if we wished to run in the derbies at the Allegheny County Fair again, that we could not be active members of CVFD books. They advised to run in the 2015 derbies, we would have to quit CVFD before the first day of the previous fair, which was in 2014. Chris Cage wrote down the wording, read it back to all members present, and everybody agreed at that point. The 2014 contract between Allegheny County Fair and CBD was read the same. This was a verbal and written agreement between all parties, including the county officials. County officials as well as CVFD members agreed to allow Gary Von Stein to run in the derbies, even though he was an active member of the Fire Department, but myself and Cook could not at the time. We were instructed that that was in the county ordinance, which is also is in the contract itself. Starting into this year, I received information that I was going to be banned from the fair as well this year, that the policy contract was going to be changed. This is a lot of money that the Fire Department does receive. They receive over $10,000 for the four events for one week of work, including the derbies, two derbies, mudballs, sit-in and tear-down of the stage, at which I'm sure other departments in the county would be more than happy to participate, to receive some of that funding as well, since they don't get much funding. As far as the rules, the rules were posted on the Allegheny County website on June 30. There was nothing reflected that I couldn't run as a life member of the department. Slightly after that, the Fire Department received a letter. The rules were removed from the county website the next day, which was July 1. They were re, the rules were reposted on between the 2nd of July and the 4th of July. And at that time, the rules had been changed, stating that no member could run if they were a life member. As far as I took the advice from county officials, as well as the Fire Department at that meeting in 2014 regarding what myself and Cook could do as far as quitting the department, I didn't quit for any other reason but to run derbies. I mean, that was the reason I quit. As far as the Fire Department, they put me on a life status. As far as I know, I haven't received any paperwork showing that I'm a life member at this point. So, regarding the rule changes in the contract, I'm just trying to get some input whether I misunderstood something at that 2014 meeting, or am I allowed to run? Or I just don't know which guidance, as far as I took the advice of the Fire Department, as well as the county officials there. I mean, it'd be easy for the county to put these events on themselves and donate the money throughout the county to all of the departments. It would save any discrimination towards specific people not being able to run. I mean, Cook, I mean, Mr. Cook's allowed to run this year, and I'm not. We both put a resignation in two days apart. So, I'm just trying to get some, you know, some advice, you know, if I'm allowed to run your county event this year, as far as that, I mean.
Well, I think that meeting, it said no member of the Fire Department could run in that event, right?
I have the contract from 2014.
That was the decision made at that meeting because of the appearance of a conflict of interest. The Fire Department is hosting the event, they supply all the inspectors of the event, they supply all the officials for the event, and that's why they thought that a member of that Fire Department would be considered a conflict of interest for a member of that Fire Department to participate in that event.
If I can read.
And the reason why your father was allowed to run is because you said you had a car built, and you asked if your father could compete in your car, since you'd already had the expense, and we said yes, he could. And what action did your father take that night of the derby?
He didn't run. Other drivers tried the vehicles. I still supported the derby itself. I brought vehicles down, and I had money involved in, had, you know, several thousand just in two trucks. I didn't run them. As far as the issue that occurred there, I wasn't present at the time, but there was nothing in the rules that reflected that, and the only issue was, for that purpose, was to get a copy of this contract, which it does state in the contract signed by the County Fair and the Crescent Town Fire Department, that any member that has been an active member of Crescent Town Fire Department for the period from the last day of the previous fair to the last day of the current fair will be ineligible to participate as a driver of this event, which I am not currently an active member. A life status, all that is, it says I had over 12, 10 to 12 years with Crescent Town Fire Department. That's just saying, thank you for your service, you know, I can't run calls at that point as a life member. As far as running calls, I could, I joined Rawlings Fire Department at the same time I quit, still helped the community. And as far as that, anybody belongs to another Fire Department, as far as a chief's agreement, can run calls with another department as long as they're certified. So, I had not ran any calls with Crescent Town as a member of that department. So, I'm just trying to get clarification. Like I said, here's the contract that the county signed with the Fire Department in 2014. The exact wording was active member, which was okay by county officials and all county people and the Fire Department. I mean, it'd be very easy for the fair, the county, to do this derby themselves to save money, because four of the five officials are employed by the county the week of the fair. Four of them, four out of the five. I mean, it'd be very easy to do, then the money can be distributed throughout all the Fire Departments in the county. I mean, it is a county event, it's not Crescent Town's fair, it's the Allegheny County Fair, which everybody should be, have the opportunity to either, you know, have the county put it on, and if they want the funding, have, you know, say, look, you've got to have three people here for each event, we'll donate the money as, you know, as a donation. Everybody in the county should have a fair chance to get the money. I mean, there's some departments that don't have any money in their account, and you've got Crescent Town, who's got a quarter to a half a million dollars in their account at all time. I mean, it is what it is, but other departments are functioning with 15, $20,000. I mean, that $10,000 would help other departments.
Mr. Rudd, how long have you been the Allegheny County Attorney?
A good while. Why?
Just curious. You ever remember the county passing an ordinance, regulation concerning racing at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds for demolition derbies during the week of the fair?
Yep.
So, this is something between fair staff and the Crescent Town Volunteer Fire Company?
So, I don't, there's going to be.
Yeah, well, my question, let's go back here, let's add a whole bunch of more information into the record here. Now, why did this whole, why did this conflict erupt, to begin with?
It was conflict, saying that the officials were initially cheating for me, and then I had to borrow a bolt in a vehicle, which was, the rules said it had to be welded. I had a bolt in there, which was less than the weld itself. I had a bolt instead of a weld. At that point, once I was inspected, I was told by the officials, if you would like to run it, you either got to take the bar out or get welded. Loaded the car back up, took it out, welded the bolt, welded the bar in, brought it back, they passed the inspection.
Okay. Commissioner Valentine, you were brought into this melee a year or so ago to, I guess, participate in some mediation of a lot of hue and cry that county fair staff were hearing from a multitude of fans, who were alleging to county officials that there was cheating taking place during the demolition derby.
I think probably the worst thing is you made a statement that night, well, if I'm cheating tonight, I've been cheating for a couple of years, and the other competitors didn't like that, because you'd won like two or three years in a row, and you made the statement in front of the other competitors. Well, I've been cheating the past couple of years, but as far as that contract, I think the Crescent Town Fire Department is the one that drew up that contract. It's not drawn up by the county.
But it's signed by the county, sir. I mean, it's, just like I was in the meeting, all eyes were pointed to you and Mr. Comeoff for guidance in this contract itself, and you know that. It was all okay by Mr. Comeoff and yourself, no one else. The Fire Department, as well as me and Mr. Cook were there present, and I took, I didn't quit the Fire Department just to quit, I love helping my community. I quit for that reason, I absolutely love running derbies. I got, I love doing it. I mean, I wouldn't have quit for any other reason, and I quit with the intention of, I took your guidance as far as that and the Fire Department's guidance, and they understood the same thing. That's why they put me as a life member, because the agreement was active member. A life status member is not an active member.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Are you still running runs for Crescent Town Amulets?
No, sir, not at this current time, no.
When's the last time you ran, have you run since you became a life member? You're from Rawlings?
I ran, I ran as a.
Not for them.
I ran as a mutuated, yes.
With, from Rawlings?
Yes.
You're a member of Rawlings, but you still run with Crescent Town Amulets?
Anybody in the county.
So, the only you've done is got a life membership and kind of gotten this loophole, going out to Rawlings, you're still running with Crescent Town, which is the problem in the past, which was, you were connected with Crescent Town, you were winning the event sponsored by them, it was a conflict of interest. You're still doing it, you just got this loophole.
That was not, that was not the agreement.
But that's what the problem is, that's the appearance of impropriety that we've, that the fair's been dealing with. Say, if you'd have quit and just weren't part of any fire company anymore, and you were running, it probably wouldn't be an issue, but you're really doing it through the back door, which you couldn't do through the front door, and that is the problem. So, it's an appearance of impropriety here.
I understand, I mean, if it's coming down that the, you know, the officials are cheating, maybe instead of punishing the drivers who put money in to put a show on at your fair, get some honest officials, that there's no issue. I mean, I was told myself that I can run any event down there, the mudball, the dirt drags, I just cannot run in a derby. So, I'm getting punished, how about we just get some honest officials? If that's the issue, if you think they're cheating for certain people, if you think they're cheating for me, maybe they're cheating for somebody else. Just get different officials, and make it fair for everybody. I mean, I'm a taxpaying citizen of Allegheny County, I should be able to participate in events just like anybody else. I mean, I'm telling, I mean, I'm being told I can't win county money, but, I mean, I feel myself, I pay my taxes, the wrong time, never late, I should be able to participate in these events, because it's something I absolutely love to do. I mean, it's only fair, I mean, it's, they've specifically changed the rules, and the Fire Department told me they changed the rules, just so I specifically can't run myself. Mr. Cook's allowed to run, I'm not. So, I mean, it's.
Is he listed in any way as a member of the Fire Department now?
What's that?
Is he listed in any way as a member of the Fire Department?
I don't know, as far as me, they have never given me anything saying I'm a life member. No, he belongs to Bowling Green, which he can still run mutually, he can still run mutually.
Is he listed as a life member, or as an active member of the Fire Department now?
No.
Of Crescent Town?
No.
Well, I'd say that's probably where they're making that differentiate.
Well, in the issue.
The county had nothing to do with drawing up that contract.
But they signed it. It's a contract between the fair board, the fair, and the Fire Department. As far as the Fire Department, it's their, I mean, they put me life status with the intention I could still run. Now, their hands being forced, they're saying by the county, and I've talked to Mr. Shade about this several times, and he says that the county has no, they're not in it, but they are in it because it's a county event. I mean, it's not.
We don't judge the tomatoes, we don't judge the corn, we don't judge the pigs. It's, there's an agreement with Crescent Town ambulance, or Fire Company Amulets, to run the demolition derby. They signed an agreement with the fair to do that. The county doesn't set the rules, just like we don't pick the fire queen, or anybody else that has some event during fair weeks. I mean, I think that's the way it is, I mean.
What landlords is it?
I mean, is there an option where like, other departments can get in to help out to get the fundings? Or is it just Crescent Town's got it forever? I mean, can other departments in the county come and help out at the fair and get fundings? Or is this set in stone, where Crescent Town's got it for life?
There's nothing set in stone.
So, if other departments would like to help, that they can help?
We will get with fair staff and evaluate that next year.
As far as next year, will I be able to run? I gave them.
Well. I would think your questions have to be to the Fire Department. Like I said, we signed the contract, but they wrote the contract, they put the wording in the contract, and I think that contract is approved by their board.
It is.
Before it ever comes to us, and basically, we're just the landlords. The only reason I was at that meeting that day, you called me.
Yes.
And so, to try to help mediate, I drove 35 miles from my house on a Saturday, and I thought we had it all ironed out there.
I did too. I took advice.
And we made the option, let your dad run the car, and your dad got rather upset that night, and I was the one who went and talked to him, got him a copy of the contract and all.
I appreciate it.
And then, he decided, well, I'm not going to run anyway.
Well, he's too old to run, that was just a point, that allow one member.
Hey, don't watch the old stuff.
It was just a point that they're allowing, everybody agreed to allow one member to run, and not two other members, just because we won.
But I would say, I would say your questions and all have to be directed to the Fire Department. It's their contract.
But it's your, it's the fair.
It's their contract.
It's the Allegheny County Fair.
You're right.
Well, we're just the landlords. We're just, they put on that event, it gets money for them, but then it also raises some money for the county, right? But it's their event, just like 4H, it was just here, you know, earlier. They put on all the livestock exhibitions, we're just merely the landlord. We give these people a place to have those activities. We don't, we don't pay Bowling Green to put that event on. They came to the county and said, hey, we'd like to do this during fair week, we'll take X amount, and we'll pay the county X amount for allowing us to do it. So, it is the Fire Department's event. The Fire Department drew up the contract, their board approved the contract. We, county commissioners never took a vote on the contract.
So, there's no issue with, from the county standpoint, of me running?
None.
And Mr. Von Stein, I think you got a bad deal, and I, but it's not us up here that did something dirty to you at all, and it's, it never came to us, I never even, I haven't seen the contract since you had it. I never even, I haven't seen the contract since, since you had it today, and I've, I've told you that. But it, it doesn't involve the county. It, it involves the, the Bowling Green Fire Department, or Crescent Town. And I, I think that they, they were trying to take the easy way out, instead of saying, you know, trying to play games with you, instead of doing what, what, and, and again, they don't know what if they say next year, anyone can race, but Mr. Von Stein, I, I don't know what, what the recourse is there.
So, I mean, as a county aspect, I mean, where, where do I go with this? I mean, as far as.
To the Fire Department.
I, they're not, they're not willing, that's why I'm coming to you today, sir, because it's a county event. I mean.
It's not a county event. That, that's where you're wrong. It's not a county event.
Okay.
It's a privately sponsored event, sponsored by the Fire Department. That's why if it was a county event, the contract would be drawn up by the county. We'd say, this is what you have to do.
Is that, is that, is that, is that a possibility? The county take, take control of it, so no one can be discriminated? I mean, it's obviously, I mean, I'm just coming in front of you today, because you, you know what my standpoint of this is. I'm specifically being discriminated against the running this derby. It's fine, it is what it is. But I just want you guys to be aware that this is happening with, it might be happening with another event, but people's not coming out. I'm coming to you guys.
Let, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
Can you go to them and ask them to remove your name as a license number?
I tried. I tried. I had a letter, I had a letter written to them to get rid of my life status. Like I said, I went life status, like I was instructed, we went the week before the fair because we had to not be a member since the previous fair, okay? I did that. All my resignation said, it said life status, whatever status necessary. That's exactly what I was instructed to do by the county officials and the Fire Department. I did exactly what I was told to do. And you guys know that, and they know that. They're playing a loop, they're, just like he said, I'm getting the bottom of the deal here, and it's specifically, I mean, members that's running the fair, running this derby, if it's their event, are specifically told me, we changed the rules so you can't run. And it's an Allegheny County event. That's all, that's all my, and I understand.
It's not an Allegheny County event. It's an event held in Allegheny County, but it is a Crescent Town Volunteer Fire Company event. They draw up the contract, they set the rules, they supply all the people, so that, that's where that difference is. Your beef is with the Fire Department, not, not with us.
But just for the record, I have sent them a letter saying I'd like to recall my life status, no part of the Fire Department whatsoever. It is before the fair, so if they change it next year, or it could continue to change, just like you said, if they keep it the same way it is this year, they told me once I was a life member, I can't go off a life member. I don't know. I can't go in and give my books. They told me I can't quit the department. I don't know what to do.